Seven o'clock on Thursday, December 12th. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Albernett. And we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the eye of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Council Trump.
Present.
Council Bozenberg.
Present.
Council Sukka.
Present.
Council West.
Present.
And Council Myers.
Here.
All right, please let the record reflect. We do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Myers, do I have a second? Second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Ooh, go ahead and recognize our sheriff's deputy while he's here. So if you could get to page four of your packet, the floor is yours.
All right, looks like met the hours for the month again. About fourteen calls per service since the last council meeting time. Not seeing anything super that has popped out, but I can see. Any questions, something like that?
Also anything?
Schools getting out, it sounds like, pretty soon. For how long, how long is school out for?
Uh, they're out, I think they're in all next week. So they're out that Monday, the 23rd until the sixth, so.
Try to make it out here next Wednesday and Thursday and calls allow and.
In case the holiday cheer takes over.
Yes, and let some of the kids know to drive a little better.
We always appreciate it. And then, means nothing to you, but we do have contract on the agenda for tonight, so look forward to continuing to work with you.
All right, we appreciate it.
Awesome.
Okay, so we'll get into that session.
Have a safe tour tonight, Will.
I'm gonna try. Thanks.
All right, sweetheart. We will move back to item number five, our public hearing for the budget amendment for FY 25. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Sukka, do I have a second?
Clear.
Second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are open at 7:02 PM. You do have in your packet a proof of publication, so the notice was published in the Gazette. And then you have the notice itself on page number two. Any questions, comments from the public?
I don't have response.
Proposed budget amendment. I don't believe, didn't we receive any written correspondence?
No.
No written correspondence. So just for transparency's sake, this budget amendment is to add $30,520 to public safety. So that is to cover expenditures that were incurred in FY 24 but were paid for in FY 25, so to bring those budgets back flat. And then $5,000 to Public Works and $45,000 to general government for wages and benefits increases due to new hires. So the overall amendment is to increase by $80,520. And you'll notice from the bottom there, that comes out of fund balance. So this does not impact property taxes. So it takes our ending fund balance that was $1,124,450 down to $1,43,930. Now I'll ask if there's any comments. Hearing none, I'd seek a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Trump, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, it's closed at 7:04 PM. All right. We'll move on to citizen comments. So here in the city of Albernett, we have two types of comments, those for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. We do ask that you state your name and address clearly from the record and limit comments to five minutes. So are there any comments on agenda-related items?
I believe B and L Ag is on there for agenda.
Um, we didn't have a subject matter, and so we'll just have you talk during non-agenda.
Okay.
All right, hearing none, moving on to non-agenda-related items. We'll recognize you.
All right, thanks. I had notes because. So, um, can I just stay here?
You can stay there, name and address if you would.
So my name's Missy or Melissa Stahl, 212 South Main Street or Main Avenue, Albernett, Iowa. 520, 5220.
Two.
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 Yes. Is that enough?
Yep.
Okay. So I want to thank you for allowing me to have a little chance to speak. I just have a couple of questions about the access to our property. My name is Missy Stahl, Melissa, and I know some of you, I don't know all of you. So you may or may not know, Bill Balk and I, we purchased land to build our dream shouse right down the street. We've been met with lots of positive thoughts and support and because, you know, we brought another business into Albernett. In starting our dreams, we actually worked with the developer to design the layout of our shouse. And the way that it is currently is not actually what we planned. The plans weren't finalized. We ended up talking to Guy Trimbley, who used to work for the city, and he advised us that it would be a smart idea for us to kind of rotate the position of our building so that we would have a good access using the kind of road that is there. And I do have a kind of a form that the Lynn County, city of Albernett, everybody had to sign off on this access in order for us to obtain our permits, in order to build the property. And we weren't able to sign off until we showed that we have our driveway, our driveway in there plus access to the building. There wasn't any talk of us that we would not be able to use the kind of access road that is there. None of that was ever brought up, not by the city of Albernett, not by the Lynn County. And we've been in contact with them many, many times. We have been notified by the mayor here that we're not allowed or we're not supposed to be using the public access road. And so we're actually here to gain some support from the city council for us to be able to use that access road without any instances. Again, I have the printout of what it looked like beforehand. I know that there's, like even in the picture, there's a vehicle, which if you guys want to see this, I can pass that up here. There is a truck on here. We have our neighbor, which we've kind of been accused of parking, which we did have a tractor there at one point. We didn't realize it wasn't on our property and we got it moved. But we've been accused of having our personal vehicles parked there, which they never were, it was always the neighbor. Trucks, they've had friends with trucks there, kind of blocking our path and getting in and out. We don't park on that, we simply use that to access the, one of the garage doors. We also have another garage door in the front that we can access from the street via the driveway. So we kind of, again, like I mentioned, bottom line is we're looking for support from the city, you know, to kind of let us freely use that just to drive on to get to our shop so that we can access our, the shop area. And again, I, yeah, we have the permit signed, Lynn County and Albernett, so we just want you to kind of be, everybody to be aware of that. Are there any questions for me?
So what I will add, so we do have a process by which you can request encroachment. And so there is an application, we'd be happy to provide one. It's not on our website, we haven't got it up there yet, so we can definitely get you that. So then that would, that's what would be considered by council.
Okay.
So we'll put all of the information on there. I will also say that particular site plan is not what was approved. The one that was approved does not have the driveway on it. And we have provided that, Lynn County provided that to us and it was provided as part of the case that is under litigation as well.
We did have.
There was a separate site plan and that is what was approved by the city and it did not show that particular driveway. But again, there is an encroachment request process and so if that's something that you're interested in, you can fill it out and that'll be on the agenda for council to consider.
Okay, that would be good.
Any other comments by council? Thanks for stopping. Do you have anything else, sorry? Any other comments on non-agenda-related items? Hearing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I've got just a couple of things. First and foremost, the city receives an email, which I would actually like to go ahead and read. So this is from, it says, hello, my name is Drew Stenzland and I serve as the Community Engagement Officer for the Auditor of the State's Office. And in that role, I run our Public Innovation and Efficiency Program, the PIE program, P-I-E. And first off, congratulations on being our best performing city for your size. You are all showing communities across our state how to operate as efficiently as possible. As an award auditor, Sand will be presenting you with a certificate and some actual pie in December or January. Hopefully in the next few weeks, he'll be able to get the date and we'll coordinate that. So congratulations, Stahl, of you. We received the PIE award for best performing city of our size. That goes, that is all the hard work put into this office.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think a lot of that comes through in our transparency and how we talk about our budget and how we think about expenditures and those sorts of things. So I wanted to share that with all of you. Next on mine is a generator update. So I'll tell you what, when that power went out the other night, not only were we on well three, but I was really hoping we didn't get a fire call. But the good is.
Amen.
The concrete has been poured, so the concrete pad is now there. And I've asked for a timeline on the remainder of the project. I have not yet received that. So they do have to, they're going to run gas line from the station over to the wellhouse. And so I don't know if they'll be able to get through the frost or if we're waiting until spring at this point. So I am still waiting to hear from the contractor on that. Similarly, and speaking of this last weekend's power outage, I'm a little surprised Mac didn't have it in his report, but two of the three generators failed to start. And so the wellhouse and shop was good, the lift station and the one here at city hall did not start. We were able to get the lift station started manually, so it's a transfer switch issue where basically the power went out and it didn't transfer, but it needed the generator and so it didn't kick on. Mac did also have to turn it off manually when the power came back on, so there's definitely something with the switch. We didn't investigate city hall, just given the time of night and freezing wasn't a concern because it was in the mid 40s. So those are due for service here in the coming weeks and hopefully that will get addressed. And I have one more, I'll say it now. I would like to, I was going to do it during the fire report, but he's not even here. Big thank you to Chief Hoover for all of his service and dedication throughout the years. I'm not sure if he's retiring from the department or just the position.
No, we told him he wasn't.
Okay, thank you. I was, I figured that was much, but his leadership has been insurmountable and we just appreciate everything that he has done. And then likewise, congratulations TJ on being elected being the fire chief. We'll make it official, official in January. All the applause. We'll make it official in January, but want to issue our congratulations. All right, with that, we'll move on to council reports, council comments. Council Trump.
I don't have anything to add on what you said.
All right, Council Bozenberg.
Yeah, me either.
Council Sukka.
Nothing at this time.
Council West. Council Myers.
Nothing at this time.
All righty, that brings us to written reports and we will start with the fire department. And we will recognize our wonderful fire department ladies. How are you tonight? We have the chief's report, I don't know if he shared it with you.
Yep, I've got it.
Okay.
He was talking about fire extinguishers here and about the building is settled, so we have some tripping hazards. So that's already in your report, so you've got that. We had Dr. Sagers, who is our medical director, out at our last training and he went over the program called SALT. And it is a triage for a mass casualty incident. And the biggest reason that we put it together or wanted that to happen was because we keep hearing about the school shootings and all these disaster things that are happening with the kids. And we just want to make sure that we are prepared and ready. And we're finding that we might not have everything we want, so Dr. Sagers is very willing to guide us and get us through to have a triage set up. So that'll be a big plus for us. With TJ being voted in as our chief coming up here very shortly, he's also got training for, what's it called? The drill that you can do for mass casualty things, shooting.
All alert, alert training.
Yes. And that will be very advantageous for us to learn some of that information also. So those are the biggies. Other things that we did, I have Brenda here for this because I'm not tech savvy, but she is. And we've been working on updating the computer systems at the station and setting it up so that we have a guest Wi-Fi setup so that people aren't using ours and have access to our records. So those things are kind of crucial. So if you have questions regarding what we have done, she is the one to talk to at the moment.
TJ's been into girling this too.
But that's basically where we're at at this point, so.
Perfect.
Questions for us? And yes, we will miss Chief Hoover as being our chief, but on the other hand, he's probably more than ready to retire, I'm sure.
Again, he says again. He already did it once.
Yeah, but we're not going to let him leave, leave, so he doesn't get that lucky yet. But we're looking forward to having that guy right there.
Regarding the fire extinguishers, that is something we put, we went through our bid procedure, so we put it out, public notification that we were looking for bids. We didn't receive any, so I'll make sure we make some phone calls because that has at least been posted, so it should be good. We'll get, we'll get rolling on that.
I'm working on our budget and we made you guys aware of where you stand on your budget so far this year.
No, we don't have a clue.
Okay, we need to keep that covered.
I know Vicki was working out whether she could schedule a report, so it would just send over. And then part of tonight, a little bit waiting for tonight's amendment because otherwise it would have scared him. So most of the amendment is to cover some bills from last year and bring them up to stuff, so it'll look a lot better after tonight.
I already know that part.
It'll look a lot better after tonight. Any other questions for?
The cadet training programs, that's still kind of on.
Yes, I have, I have the part of it that is set up for what the cadets can and cannot do. I have that part figured out. I've been in touch with the neighbor insurance with Chris. She's getting the information from their underwriter. She hasn't got that, all that information yet back so that I know how to coordinate on that regard. We're about that far away from it now, so we're very close to getting that set up. My part is done until I can hear what she requires.
Let us know if you need any follow-up there. Anything else for Brenda or Rebecca? Brings us to city administrators, so you have that report on the table.
Apologies that that didn't make it into the packet. Rebecca McDonald, city admin. I have to admit, I haven't felt terribly productive over the last month only because I've been reading and researching and had a couple of resolutions here and there to, to work on. So this week, we received the engineering services contract from HR Green and I have done some preliminary research on some grant funding that we can utilize to supplement our budget. I had the opportunity to meet with the city admin from Ely, his name is Eldy Miller. He will be a fantastic resource for me and a network support. He's already introduced me to the Northeast chapter of, one of the acronyms, Iowa City County Management Association, does that sound right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So I've got some emails to send to introduce myself to some people that I can add to my network of support. I collaborated with the mayor to identify some 90-day goals that we'll go over here later in the agenda. I had the ordinance binder out and I was reading through those, trying to familiarize myself. Assistant with drafting the budget amendment resolution for council's consideration tonight. And after some guidance, I completed the minutes from our November meeting and got those submitted to the Gazette for publication.
That's a lot. Bill, that network is going to be huge because, yeah, we know that from the clerk perspective and it's no different for our city administrators, so.
It's going to be key.
Yeah. Huge thanks to Eldy Miller. He's former mayor of Ely and so it's kind of nice because he's now been on both sides from the administrator as well as having to run the place. And so he's, he's been incredible. I called on him several times. They received the same grant for generators we did and so he's gone through some of the similar projects.
Yeah.
Any questions for Rebecca? All right.
Okay.
We'll move on to Public Works. So that one's in your packet, we're on page six. Items of note, well two is back online. Oh, I mentioned the power outage. One thing that was awesome is, let's see if he even has it on here. It might have been on the last report. He just had a backup, a battery backup installed on the skater system out at the lift station within the last 30 days. And that is the only reason that we knew the generator hadn't fired because it alarmed out that the pit was too full. And so it wouldn't have done that without that battery backup on the skater pieces out there. The alarms just would have not gone because there had been no electricity. So it's been doing some really good things to help future-proof the system. Speaking of that, you do, there are a couple of things to note here, specifically on well, also well two. Well three, the chlorine booster pump is experiencing some failures. We also had, oh, it's the third bullet down, the chlorine detector alarms. Those are at both wellhouses. Those trip when it gets really, really cold and sets off the alarms. We did figure out how to calibrate those, but at the same time learned that they're obsolete. And all of that, the booster pump as well as the detector alarms are because we're on chlorine gas. And so we are, Mac and I are working together on what it would take to get to liquid chlorine to upgrade the system. It is so much safer. Cost-wise, it's about the same, but changing out those gas containers or gas cylinders makes me really nervous every time he has to do it. So it'll make it a lot easier to maintain if we're on liquid gas, or liquid chlorine, excuse me. So he's working with Hawkins on that. They actually just did a town similar to our size, so they've already kind of got an idea of everything that's needed for that conversion. And so we're going to start getting some numbers and budget that out. Because if not, we're going to start putting some money into replacing some of these parts, which we may not even be able to find. So yeah, I think that was it for my additions to Public Works. Any questions?
I did text Mac because the alarm was going off up at the city shop when I went up to the camper.
Yes, yeah, I had another neighbor text me and it was on like a Saturday and like, I feel bad, but yeah. That's where he, he spent several hours figuring out how to calibrate it.
It's okay, it's re-calibrated, it's just cold.
It happens when they get cold.
I sympathize.
My alarms go off too.
Man, sister.
Any questions? Hearing none, city clerk treasury, this is on page seven and eight and nine. All's been going well there. She went to... Oh, she's got the budget workshop in there. Came back with a bunch of really great information from that, including this year's timeline. So you will see that later on the agenda as well, that we're going to start setting budget workshops. So that'll be, that'll be a fun process. Looking at profit and loss, I've told you, as long as the over-budget numbers are still negative, we're good. There is one that you're going to see is not, and that is our community and economic development. That is as expected, so that is because we made a TIF payment and it just reflects funny on the budget because we transfer in and out of TIF. And so that one is okay. We have, we budgeted the money, we made our TIF payment on December 1st. So the fact that we are showing positive in the over-budget in that particular area is not of concern. And then everything else looks good. So are there any questions on profit and loss? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got a motion by Bozenberg, do I have a second?
Clear.
Second by Trump, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. And new business, starting on page 16. So this is Resolution 2024-47, adopting the budget amendment for FY 25. So we already discussed all of this during the public hearings, so I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution and then see if there are any questions. So Resolution adopting budget amendment for fiscal year 25, whereas the city of Albernett published the required notice on November 29th, 2024 concerning the budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, whereas a public hearing was held on December 12th, 2024 in accordance with the published notice, whereas the budget amendment is needed to increase the spending authority by $80,520 due to expenses incurred in FY 24 that were paid in FY 25 as well as wage and benefit increases for new hires. And whereas this budget amendment does not change the property tax levy in the current fiscal year, and whereas the Albernett City Council, after allowing the public to speak on said budget amendment, gave final consideration to the proposed budget amendment, now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa, does hereby adopt the budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as attached herein. Be it further resolved, the city clerk is directed to certify and file the budget amendment as adopted to the Lynn County Auditor. And again, you've got the budget publication on page 17. Any questions? Hearing none, I'd seek a motion to approve Resolution 2024-47.
So moved.
Moved by Sukka, do I have a second?
Clear.
Second by Trump. This will be, because it is a budget, we are going to do a roll call vote. Council Trump.
Hi.
Council Bozenberg.
Hi.
Council Sukka.
Hi.
Council West.
Hi.
Council Myers.
Hi.
That motion carries. Item 12B, Resolution 2024-48, to renew our CD. So this is the Resolution authorizing the renewal of a certificate of deposit. So if you all remember, we had, we opened a CD a while ago, seeded it with $50,000. It's up for renewal and it renews tomorrow, so wanted to give council an opportunity to speak on what they want to do with that, the current value. What we were provided from the credit union or the bank is $51,322.65. That is probably slightly high, it'll be slightly higher when it renews, but not by much, so. Actually, hang on a second. Oh, that was the original issue. We must have already renewed this once, sorry. That was the original issue. It's currently up to, the current balance is $53,237.67. And that was of December 3rd, so it's going to gain about 10 more days of interest by the time that it does renew. We checked the special rates. So currently, Farmer State Bank has an 11-month special at 4.35%. Their non-special rates wasn't anything above 1%, so I wouldn't entertain that. But at the special rate, we don't currently need that $50,000 for anything, so I didn't see any concern with renewing. Questions or comments before I read the resolution? We're looking at Resolution 2024-48, authorizing the renewal of a certificate of deposit, whereas the city of Albernett is committed to sound financial management and prudent investment practices in accordance with Iowa code. And whereas the city maintains funds in a certificate of deposit in the amount of $53,237.67 as part of its diversified investment portfolio to ensure safety, liquidity, and a competitive rate of return. And whereas the current CD investment is scheduled to mature on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, requiring the city to determine the best course of action for reinvesting these funds. Whereas the city council has determined that renewing the investment for a term of eleven months at a rate of four point three five percent, provided the rate remains competitive, is in the city's best financial interest. Whereas the renewal rate is subject to change on a weekly basis, requiring careful monitoring to confirm the rate at the time of renewal. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city council of the city of Albernett, Iowa, does hereby authorize the renewal of the certificate of deposit CD investment for a term of eleven months contingent upon the rate being confirmed at or above four point three five percent at the time of renewal. If the rate falls below four point three five percent, the renewal shall not proceed without further review and approval by the city council. Be it further resolved, that the city clerk is authorized to execute all necessary documents to effectuate the CD renewal under the terms outlined in this resolution. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight?
So moved.
Moved by Myers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sukup. Uh I'm gonna call a roll call on this one too, since it has to do with funding. Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Sukup?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Counselor Myers?
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries. Okay. Twelve C, set dates for the FY twenty-six budget workshops. So I'm gonna ask y'all to get your calendars out. Our January meeting is early. It's like January ninth, uh just the way that Thursdays fall. So I was looking at setting a date the week of the thirteenth, and then a secondary follow-up date, either the week of the twentieth or the twenty-seventh. That way we don't have two meetings in one week, we could do it the week of the sixth, but we'd have two meetings. So y'all let me know if there are any particular days that maybe don't work, or I can throw one out.
Sixteenth is out for me.
Okay.
Said for me, sixteenth won't work for me, whatever.
Okay.
Same way.
Said sixteen doesn't work for me either.
How do I feel about the fourteenth, Tuesday the fourteenth?
That doesn't work for me.
Uh six P M?
I think I retired on that day.
And then?
Fourteenth?
Yep, Tuesday the fourteenth at six P M. The second date of, let's give Vicky some time to work on it. We go two weeks later, the twenty, Tuesday the twenty-eighth?
I don't know.
Okay. I can do any night that week, so y'all name it.
I'm open any other night. I've got the weekend, Monday, Saturday, we're talking.
Yes.
I'm up, yeah, I can do it twenty eighth.
Monday, Saturday, and twenty ninth, we're sure. Okay, do Monday the twenty-seventh?
Sounds good, sure.
Set a backup date of?
Six o'clock?
Yep, January twenty-seventh at six o'clock. Alright, I don't think we need a motion for that. Actually, why don't we, I get a motion to approve setting the FY twenty-six budget workshops for January fourteenth at six P M and January twenty-seventh at six P M. Moved by Trump, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine, Lynn County Sheriff's Office FY twenty-six contract for law enforcement services. This is on page twenty-one of your packet. They did increase, oh, so did she? Didn't drop the letter in here. We also received a letter along with the contract, so it did increase three dollars an hour, so we are right now at forty-two dollars, and it is increasing to forty-five dollars per hour. We're currently at ten hours per week, it's what we have set that to, so you will notice there is a blank in there, so whoever makes the motion, will please fill in that blank, I am not gonna read this one. Basically, it's four pages long. They maintain control over their employees and they provide us services, is what the contract says. The rest of it remains the same as years past. Any questions? Our fire department makes them very cozy, so they serve our community extremely well.
The barista bar.
And they get cookies this time of year?
You probably have more coverage than what their actual hours show.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move with that resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine, um for paragraph one, uh forty-three hours per week, which is what we currently have.
We're at ten hours per week.
Ten hours.
Forty-three.
Per week?
Yes, they moved it to weekly.
Alright, I'll do that, and that's all you need here, huh?
That's all I need, you wanna state that one more time?
Ten hours a week.
Perfect. So I have a motion from Trump to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine with paragraph one filling in ten hours per week, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Myers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Alright, page twenty-five. City administrator, ninety-day goals. So if y'all remember from uh the resolution when we hired Rebecca, uh that we did build in that um ninety-day goals or benchmarks were met, that there would be a wage increase, and so this, and those were to be with council approval, so this is to establish those goals. They are written in the form of um objectives and key results, just so we kinda know what the, the why behind the what, um if you wanna look at it that way. So the focuses will be, first one is to enhance operational efficiency of city services through optimization and cost-saving measures. So looking to implement cost-saving initiatives resulting in at least three thousand dollars in annualized reduction in operational costs. Transition fifty percent of city forms and applications to online format, reducing processing times by twenty-five percent. Develop and launch an employee Intranet site, enabling staff to quickly locate important records, policies, and documents. So that is objective number one. Objective number two is to effectively manage the park project to ensure timely completion and adherence to budget. So we will partner with the project engineer to develop a detailed timeline, including milestones and deliverables, conduct bi-weekly progress meetings uh to address challenges and ensure adherence to the timeline, maintaining a minimum on-time milestone completion rate of ninety percent. Implement a budget tracking system to monitor expenditures, ensuring that we remain on budget. And submit applications for at least three grant opportunities to supplement city financing. That one in particular, we did go with submitting of applications, we cannot guarantee that we'll receive any of those, and we definitely cannot guarantee that those would be within that ninety-day timeframe, so. Really honestly, just the, the application process would be good to get uh in the habit of. And the more you put out, the, the more likely we are to receive. The third objective is ensure city policies align with applicable laws and codes while promoting transparency and accountability. So complete a review of the employee handbook, we did that somewhat recently, but things are constantly changing. And so this, we just wanna ensure that we're still in compliance with state and federal regulations. Finalize and implement a policy for open records requests. Those of you that have been on council for a while are probably like, hey, we did that? Yeah, we learned, um we, we're engaged with the lawyer, we had a request come in, and our current policy, they changed the, the Iowa code, and it is no good. So um that one, that one for sure needs updating. Develop a comprehensive purchasing and procurement policy, we've talked about that many times, it will establish guidelines for vendor selection, expenditure tracking and approval processes, and then design and implement a clear, accessible, and efficient employee time off request process. I know that it's a small office, but it's just good to know to have those guidelines for how we're requesting time off and using our PTO. Some of that's in the handbook, but the actual process isn't. So that's where we landed. Any questions? Comments?
I've got ninety days from now, or day of hire, or?
So, so the way the resolution wrote is that the, as um achieving these goals after ninety days of hire. So it doesn't have to be like, like, we're not gonna assess at ninety, be like, oh, you missed, like, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep going towards it. Um and she started work, this, none of this is a surprise to her, I mean, we started a list day one, and she's already started digging in on some of this, so. No, it, it's not like a pass or fail type of thing, but like, these are the things that we would need to have in place to consider that increase. Good question. Anything we missed, anything glaring? It's a lot.
She's busy.
She's gonna be busy. I promise, no shortage of work.
Busy with doing things I have no idea how to start.
That's where my best friend Google comes in.
Eldy Miller?
Yeah. Well, if there's no questions, I would seek a motion to approve the city administrator ninety-day goals.
So moved.
Moved by Sukup, do I have a second?
Clear.
Second by Trump, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Brings us to old business, and we're gonna do a park project update, and I think that's where you're gonna go, I haven't officially met you, so I'm gonna let you introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you, uh my name's Caleb Jansen, I'm a project engineer out of H R Green out of our Cedar Rapids office. Um I'm gonna be the local project manager for the city park project, so I just wanted to invite you tonight and introduce myself in person. Yeah, as Rebecca said, we've been sending the agreement back and forth, so I think once we get that signed and approved, um yeah, we're looking forward to start scheduling a kickoff meeting and uh get started, so. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the agreement or otherwise, but yeah, like I said, just wanted to introduce myself and meet some of you in person and say we're looking forward to get started.
Fantastic, that's extended my project update too, is that we've got H R Green here tonight. Any questions?
Not yet.
We're referring by memory, this goes to your process for bid letting to final construction, right?
Yep, yeah, they're on board for the whole thing, so. Even before bid letting, we've gotta get to final design. I beat him to it, yeah, we're especially budget-wise, we're not even close, so the, the current preliminary design, we're gonna have to do some creative engineering, possibly some phased work, uh if we wanna meet our, meet our current budget, so. But they're on board, they knew that, we were transparent upfront with, hey, hey, here's how much we've got, so.
Wanna make sure that we get, get the most out of it, that we came in with the money, so yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Good, so. If anyone's interested in being on part of that planning committee, I welcome additional opinions. There'll probably be meetings during the day, so I tend to look at this side of the table, if y'all want to do participation, but.
I would do it, sure, it'd be fun.
We'll keep you informed when we're, when we're meeting. Caleb, I, I'll get that agreement signed, I appreciate the changes that Tim made, I know he was headed out of office, so. Yep, we've got the agreement in place, council already approved, moving forward with the, the price point, so it should be all set.
Okay, great.
It was wonderful to meet you and look forward to it.
You got a business card, Randy?
I do, actually, yeah. Jeffrey?
Perfect. Any other questions on the park project? We haven't even really established timeline yet, so I can't even speak to what we're looking at, but I did let them, I let all the engineers know when they bid it, that we're pretty flexible. I mean, I'd love to get it started, it's not like a, you know, we don't currently have any grant funding that we stand to lose or anything like that, so we are pretty flexible with with timelines, we wanna take advantage of it, Caleb, it's in the proposal that they're aware of, like, the best times to bid and get the best prices, so we'll wanna take advantage of that more than anything, so. Alright, that brings me to final comments, I'm gonna start to my left with Counselor Myers.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor West?
Nothing.
Counselor Sukup?
Nothing.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Um this, I should've brought this up in the city meetings, but the um lights across the street, they have trouble with them, put them out?
Yeah, um he wasn't super comfortable, it was a one-man job, uh the day he was doing it, and then it got super windy, so.
I didn't know if there was something wrong with him or?
No, uh it wasn't his report, the penguins that are usually next door, they did not, they did not sustain the sixty mile an hour winds very well, they're they're poor feet, so we're working on, they're in the shop right now, but.
Is they're gonna show up again?
I hope so.
Good.
I think he was looking for replacement parts, so if not, I'm sure he can get creative.
We got three feet in, but there's obviously three penguins with two feet, so we're waiting for three more.
One man, it's no way. Okay, just curious.
I don't want any of those yet, you just stop it.
I didn't know if they got stolen or what, you know?
No, thankfully not stolen.
That's all.
Alright, Joe, anything?
Nothing else.
Okey dokey, Rebecca, anything to add?
No.
Brenda, Verona? That's good. Alright, I don't have anything to add either. We'll confirm date and time of our next meeting is, again, it's early, so this one's gonna creep up on us, I know it, January ninth, uh twenty twenty-five at seven P M. With that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bozenberg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by West, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned at seven forty-five P M.